Section thirty, time for meeting to begin. I would ask everyone to take a drive with the Slido Flattik.
Because of the nature of the meeting tonight, I don't believe a roll call is necessary as it is not a public borough council meeting, but an hearing or a meeting for the purposes of our community, making any comments that they wish before the renewal of our cable television franchise agreement, which is coming up for vote on Monday, this Monday, April 29th. It is something that has been discussed, or at least been notified on several other meetings to make our community aware of it, but there was discussion and a request to hold a public meeting for the opportunity for comments. I do want to caution, and I'll just give you as a personal aside, getting involved in this negotiating of this agreement initially was more of a consumer rather than as a council person when I first got involved. And the reason for that is sometimes we're not always happy with the providers that we have, whatever it might be. But when I became involved in this negotiation, what I learned is this is really more of a static process. It was more of a legal process and making sure that or ensuring that our current cable provider was or at least meets the minimum standards necessary to be able to issue another franchise agreement, which will be coming for the vote on Monday. Understand that we printed out and we also had online what the agreement looks like. Much of it is terms and conditions that are very much standard legalese on every franchise agreement. There were a few items in there that we were able to negotiate further that appear on the final page, but by and large, these are the same, I would say, achievements that every municipality will get through Cablevision. And in addition, the, and most importantly, the franchise fee, which is very, very productive for the community itself. Tonight, we have Marilyn Davis, who is representative of Cablevision or Altice Corporation, which is the parent corporation. She is available to go over any of those items that appear in that franchise agreement. I will say that if your comments are related to service, bills and invoices, that's not necessarily why Marilyn is here today, but obviously if there is a comment, she'll take it back to, to her headquarters. If there aren't any other questions, Marilyn, just turn it over to you as to, as to the agreement and kind of ballpark the items that are important for Saraville.
Sure. Good evening. I am Marilyn Davis. I'm the state director for government affairs for Altice. I've been with the company seven years. I have been doing franchise renewals from the beginning. We have been, truth be told, engaging with Saraville since 2016 to renew our franchise. So it's taken us a long time to get here through various administrations, and I want to commend both the councilmen as well as Glenn for their due diligence on behalf of the community, advocating for things for the community. So I'm happy to take any questions. This is a 10-year contract agreement. And just want to clarify, this agreement does not mean no other provider can come in. We do not have exclusivity. It's like a license, a license to operate. That is it. Anyone who desires to come into the town can still come into the town. Another issue that may arise in this conversation is rates. Rates are not controlled by the municipality. Rates are controlled by the FCC, by the federal government. This is a cable franchise, not a broadband franchise. Broadband also is controlled by the federal government. So that which the town can negotiate, we have negotiated those terms. And again, this is very boilerplate language. The language that you will see here will be the language you will see probably in the town, in Dunellen or Matuchin or Edison's, the same language in those towns as well. There's a term period, there's providing basic cable to municipal own buildings. Those things will happen. We negotiate a few items outside of that, that is not boilerplate language, but to give some concessions to the town.
Yeah. So as far as service is concerned, to free services to the, remember, I just wanted to point out again is this is not about internet services. This is about specifically cable television and the operation of cable television within Saraville. That's what this agreement is all about. What, what was in the agreement from prior is what was moved forward, and some of which is the ability to have free cable TV to our elementary as well as our high school, to our library. We also have that to our volunteer services, which is our fire departments, as well as emergency services, I believe, but also to our public, I believe the Public Works Building as well. Sorry.
Any municipal owned property can have free, free basic cable.
Because the negotiations did take some time, and it was sometimes convoluted over the last couple of months, we were able to negotiate some issues that I think are different and are exclusive to Saraville. One is that we will get free basic internet service, internet service, account for the Borough Hall itself. We'll also provide Wi-Fi at the Borough Hall football field, which is the veterans' field. If for some reason technologically that's not possible, and it may not be possible, mapping shows it at this point, that it's not possible, Altice or Cablevision has agreed to a grant of $5,000 in lieu of doing that. In addition, there will be two biannual meetings to occur at the Borough Hall, the purpose of which is to hear comment. In this particular case, to hear comment not on the franchise agreement, but to hear your comments about how your cable service is and what you're looking for in the cable product. In addition, there are two grants that are issued. They're one-time grants, one for $10,000 is a technology grant, and the second is a $5,000 one-time grant as well to be used exclusively at the borough's threshold. These were not the ordinary negotiated items that you'll see in anybody else's agreement. We worked exclusively with Altice and Marilyn to be able to come up with, with these concessions. We were very happy and pleased that we were able to do that.
And just to expound on what you just said regarding the broadband. Broadband is not part of a cable franchise. That is a give back that the company is giving to the community.
Now, I don't want to take any more time on those explanations. I am here to, we're all here for comments from the public on, on the cable franchise agreement.
And if you have concerns regarding service, I'm happy to address those concerns on the side and take your information back. We have a unit called Corporate Executive Customer Relations that will handle any service issues, so I can provide that to them this evening. They'll respond to you tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Now, is there anyone that would like to come up from the public?
Stephen Levinson, five Telegraph Lane, Saraville. So if I heard you correct, we haven't had a franchise agreement from them since 2016?
Yes. So when a franchise expires, the expired franchise continues until it's renewed?
Yes, sir, now. So in 1996, the town negotiated a franchise agreement with TKR, and then that one ended in '06, and then there was a new agreement that was done in '07, and that's the last agreement that we have in place, correct?
It expired in 2016.
March 26, 2016.
November 6, 2016 is when it expired, and we haven't had one since.
Correct.
Okay. So in the last two cable franchise agreements, this town negotiated and got from Cablevision and TKR that they would maintain an office within the borough. I do not see that in this new agreement. I'm wondering, why is it being taken out when it's actually been in force for 30 years?
An office?
An office. Do you have an office in a store? You have a, at Shoprite, you have a store. It used to be in the mini mall on Ernston Road, and then it moved to Shoprite years ago on, off Ernston and Washington.
That's correct.
So.
And last year, there was a request by Altice to be able to move that building over to the Gateway. According to the agreement, it says it's a local area, so local.
No, no, the agreement says within the borough. The last two agreements say within the borough.
So let me say this. The location, the Gateway project, we had secure space that we thought was in Saraville, Harlan, and we realized that once we finalized with the lease, the leasee, that it's in Old Bridge, but it's, it was going to be that same plaza. So as a result of that, we asked to move the location to where it is now.
Yeah. Well, then, somebody should have did some research before you signed the lease, realizing that it's not within the borough. And I also take issue with this being changed in the contract.
Okay.
Because this was actually fought for over, like I said, probably 30 years ago. I was on the cable franchise, cable advisory board back then. I was involved in the 1996 negotiation, and we fought for it, and it was something that we got, and it's very sad and upsetting to me to see it go. And if you take the language out now and you say local office, how are you going to define local? What is local? Is local Piscataway? Is local Dunellen? Then define local in here. Make the change. Make a local office be Saraville, Old Bridge, or South Amway. Make it more restrictive than it is now. Put some better verbiage in here so that 10 years from now, or two years from now, when you want to give up the lease in Gateway and move to Piscataway at your other facility and just have that be it, now we have to travel that much further to exchange things, to pay bills, to, you know, get new boxes or whatever?
I will say this, through technology and innovation, even in five years, you may not be going to the store. One, you can send and receive your equipment overnight. You can, you can return equipment through the post office or through FedEx, right? You can pay bills online. In five years, the stores may be obsolete altogether. I mean, I can't say that, but I'm saying like, we're evolving through technology. I mean, you, you, like you said, 1996, you were here, 1996, no, we were all here, right? And, and the world has evolved since 1996. Who knows what's going to happen in 20, in 2034, right? We don't know what the world's going to look like.
See, I, I, yes, you can overnight me the box, but if the store is open and my box is broken, I can go go and get it and bring it home and boom, I'm good to go. I don't have to wait.
Right now, you can go, right now, you can go down the street to Old Bridge and get a box and return it.
Right, I understand that. But what's to stop you from a year and now from closing the Old Bridge office?
I don't, that's not in plan because there's a lease, right? So it's not going to close in a year because there's not a one-year lease, and, right?
How long did you lease it for?
I mean, I can get back to you with that information on how long the lease is.
I think also, because of the agreement, I think there still has to be approval by council, because this is, this is not an exclusive, this is not a one person or one entity agreement, right? It's with the borough as well. So if the building was, or the office was to be moved, they have to come to us first for approval.
Not, no, not in, not the way it's written now.
I don't, I'm not going to argue with you, but I will tell you that they, that they would come to us at the discretion that they've had before.
It says Cablevision shall establish and maintain during the entire term of consent a local area business office or agent for the purpose of receiving, investigating, resolving complaints regarding quality service, equipment malfunctions, similar matters. Set office shall be open daily during the normal business hours and in no event less than 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday with the exception of holidays. That's in the agreement. That's in that agreement. So the question is, let's define local in the agreement. Let's not just leave the word local, because local could have a different meaning for you and a different meaning for me.
It can also be challenged. Local can also be challenged if, if the company were to say, okay, Piscataway is local. The town can go to BPU and fight and say, no, 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 local is local to Saraville.
Right.
Piscataway is not local.
And that's the verbiage we had for the last 30 years in our agreement.
Trivis said that because.
That's the verbiage that I have issue with being taken out. It clearly defined what local was. Local was within the boundaries of the town. All right? And it clearly spread it out. A local office in the borough for the purpose of receiving. All right? If you look at the agreement that ended in 2019, it's number seven. It clearly says borough. It doesn't say local. So what I would like is I would like local to be defined rather than just local. Make it be local as in Old Bridge, Saraville, or South Amway. And then that way, you're fine with your gateway, but you're not a year from now when your lease is up, going to turn around and then move the office 10, 15, 20 miles away from Saraville, and then that's your definition of local. Oh, it's within the county, it's local. That qualifies. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have to give my address and everything?
You don't have to give your last name because it's on.
Bob Duffy, 111 Merritt Avenue. Listen, he has a valid point, the gentleman, and I understand it, but a contract is all gobbledygook to the normal people like me, okay? And I have basically all common sense. That's how I operate. Now, I don't know, I have a lot of questions, but I don't know if you can answer them. The 30-year contract that you had before, what were you paying the township?
30-year contract? I don't think we had a 30-year contract.
10 years. It's 10 years. It's in 10-year increments.
It's what?
10-year increments.
Okay. But what would they pay in the franchise to the township?
Let me see if I have that. It's super simple. I don't know if I gave you the number, the actual number.
And it's every 10 years?
Correct.
And that's stated 2%?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's by, that's by statute.
Now, 10, 30 years ago, we were paying 1980 for basic, or 980 for basic cable. Today, that's not, there's no basic cable. You're paying in the hundreds today. And I understand it benefits the township because of the 2% are getting more money because of the raise that you people give to your customers. Do you think, and I know you negotiated this, do you think after 30 years, maybe you should give the township 4%?
So it's by statute. So there's two, two franchise agreements. There's a local franchise agreement, LFA, that's 2%. In a system-wide, it's 3.5%. The 2% gives a town negotiating authority, which is the things that we discuss here. The 3.5%, which is negotiated with the Board of Public Utilities, takes out all negotiations. You get more money, you get less services. You get, you get basic cable and, and I think some, some internet in certain places, and that is it. You get additional money, but there's no negotiating power.
Okay.
And it's by statute.
I'll go back, I'll go back to the common sense part. 20, even 10 years ago.
Sir, it's by statute.
10 years ago, you were paying X amount of money for any kind of a product.
Uh huh.
Okay? My taxes were at a certain point. 10 years later, my taxes are higher, and yet you're paying the same 2.5%. Don't you think that the township should be giving more money now? It's a negotiated contract?
Mr. Duffy, the statute.
The problem is, is that that's not a negotiable number. It's set by statute. So it's not something that we.
Not ordinance.
I would love to be able, I would love to be able to say that we could negotiate.
We set that standard then.
The state.
The state legislature has that.
Oh, really? Because of public utility.
It is. Goes through the BPU, actually, yes. But also keep in mind this, that 2% is still important to us. It's greatly important. It's because it's based on the gross revenue received. So that number does go up, but I understand your argument. And quite frankly, when I first sat down, I went, you're kidding me. But it is by statute, and we can't divert, we can't.
Okay, all right.
We don't have the ability to do that. I learned it as well.
I thought 2% 30 years ago, maybe it should have raised a little bit, you know what I mean?
Agreed.
Now, another question. I don't know if you have this number. In the last five years, how many customers have you lost in town?
I don't, I don't have that number. I'm happy to provide that to.
Okay, no.
To Glenn.
The other thing, the other thing is, I know you give the township free internet, the cameras, you know, the schools, it's free, right?
Cable.
Cable.
Cable, not cable internet.
Not internet.
Just cable.
Although the Borough Hall is getting internet. That was part of this.
Think you can negotiate that in there or something?
Let me tell you something.
Okay. And the other thing, I, they make a lot of money. They're not poor, okay? And they're paying, I would say, not their fair share. Okay? They're paying what they can get away with. Okay?
Do understand this, and I'm not sticking up for them in any way, shape, or form, but they don't have to sign this franchise agreement.
No, I understand that.
So, so when we do say that you, we are in a certain position where we do feel that the franchise agreement is more important to have, because it gives us more, more abilities and obviously more concessions, there is the other specter of Cablevision basically saying, you know what, we're, we're just going to continue to give you service without a franchise agreement.
Or we can give you the system-wide franchise agreement, which takes you all, takes the local community out of the mix, and we just deal with the Board of Public Utilities.
Right.
That's a 4%. 3.5% goes to the town, 0.5 goes to the BPU, and then the, the community will see higher rates on top of that, for the, for that.
Okay. Now, the last question, okay? Do you think it would be nice, a nice suggestion, to take care of the citizens, I mean, the senior citizens in this town? They get a discount for their water, they get a discount for this. Do you think you can approach the board at the cable company that maybe they should give a 5% or 10% discount for seniors? 90% of them are living on a fixed income.
I'm going to respond to you one moment. I just wanted to check and see if it was in there already.
They used to give only on basic cable, and you had to verify every year that you were still a senior.
I know they give away, they, they try to get you to fill out for a $30 discount on the internet for low income, but I'm saying that's a senior period. You know what I mean?
So it's not going to be, it's not, it's not going to go across the board. I don't, I'm just double checking. I just want to double check because I thought, this is not the one. Hold on, give me a second, sorry. Hit me with one that I wasn't expecting. I just want to double check. So I will say this, we, I was sharing this with a lady in the audience whose name I did not capture. We do have a product that's coming out in May. I don't have the definitive date, like when it's coming out, but we had a product called Altice Advantage, and we're reimagining that program for low-income consumers. I mean, that's coming out in May, and that product, the last time we had it, the, the rate was like $14.99 a month. I'm not sure what the new product is going to look like. The last product was like 25 megabytes. I think this is going to be a little higher. We haven't gone public yet, so I can't disclose what that's going to look like, but that's coming out in March, I mean, May. And I'm happy to communicate to Glenn what that is when it comes out for the community.
The key is senior citizen, not just low income.
Well, Bob, the presumption is, is that a senior citizen on a fixed income should, should more than likely meet the income restrictions for a program like that.
But also, also, a regular, a single mom would qualify for that.
Correct.
But I'm, no, I'm just saying for seniors. There's, there could be some seniors there that are just over the threshold or even above the threshold, and they do, they, how can I say, they planned their retirement a lot better than other people. Why should they get penalized when it's in the group?
Because we, and I'm not saying they're getting penalized, but there are, I just want to say there are products that are available depending on your range, right? So I won't say called care per se, but if there's a senior who's looking for a particular, to lower their bill, for instance, we get these all the time. People come to call me, or they'll go to Glenn and say, my bill, and he'll send it to me, and then we'll send it to that unit, CECR, to see if there's a package that's more conducive for that particular commi, a customer. So we have a range of products that could be applicable for that particular, an individual who needs that.
Just, just asking. You don't ask.
But I'm taking notes.
All right, thank you very much.
Welcome, Mr. Duffy.
Anybody else from the public that would wish to speak or make comment?
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Sharon Wells from 11 Hendrix Court. So I was just wondering, so why did it take so long to come up with an agreement?
I wasn't here in 2016. I did, so I'm not sure what transpired. I know that the administration that was here probably in 2018, I think, was a different, I don't think you were here then.
None of us, none of us were here, but we worked over the, we, we worked the better part of the last six or eight months getting this ironed out to get it done. You know, once we became aware of the shortcoming, we acted on it immediately. I can't speak to why it wasn't addressed before that.
And I will say during that period of when COVID hit in 2020 and 2021, I mean, that was a period where there was, you know, some issues, right? And so that kind of delayed, but as the two can attest, this is not one of those like turnkey, we meet two times and it's done. This is a process. This is a back and forth and also like understanding how the industry operates and where things are in the industry and understanding the state laws and how some certain things are formulaic or the template for it. So it was a long process to get here. This was not, we started in June, I think, June, May or June last year.
And with regard to the office, at least with it being in the town, a local building owner would benefit from the.
We understand that.
From the lease. So that, that would be.
That argument was made by the members of council.
Right. So yeah, I guess that's all I have. But does it have to be 10 years? Do we have to go 10 years?
Typically, they're like around 15, 10 years.
Wow.
You know, if it's, everything is by statute.
Right.
And if we signed a five-year agreement, technically within a year, you'd have to start the renegotiation process again.
Right. So basically, when you were saying that if we didn't have a franchise agreement, Cablevision would still be here because you guys have the lines and all of that, so.
Yeah.
We can't, because of the Telecommunications Act of 1996, we cannot kick Cablevision out.
So ever?
Which also causes the problem that we can't get Comcast to come in.
That's not true. That's not true.
Comcast, Comcast won't, won't wire the, do the capital expense to wire the whole town.
Right.
To get half, 50% of the population.
So that is not true. The world has changed since 1996. There are, so there is this, in the industry, and you'll, if you do the research, you'll, you'll know what I'm talking about. But the industry is at a point where everyone has kind of maxed out when it comes to customers, right? And so, and I'll say also post-COVID, where the state, the federal government passed the ARPA bill as well as the infrastructure bill, both bills contain funding for broadband, and so they're both, even in New Jersey, New Jersey has received over $300 million for broadband. And I know that most people are still holding on to hardwired cable, but a lot of people are streaming, right? And so because of these two things, these two bills and these pots of money that's available to New Jersey, has created a climate where their fiber and fiber providers are now infiltrating or coming into communities to provide fiber optic broadband services so that those things were happening, but there is overbuilding occurring within the legacy provider communities. So others can come in, they are making the capital investments to go into communities where they see the ROI.
But does Cablevision intend to do fiber? You guys?
We are, we have, we came in, we came in here, Mr. Duffy, were you here then? I think it was probably before COVID, we came here to meet with the town, to get permission to do overlapping, which we did, I think, 2018, 2019. I think it was before COVID, though.
So there's fiber here?
There's fiber in part of the town. It's not 100%.
Okay.
No underground community, but overall, underground and MDU communities did not get, get fiber optic, but aerial communities did get fiber optic.
I'm sorry, in what communities?
Aerial, areas with aerial, no.
Okay. So the communities with underground cannot get it?
Not yet.
So the newer communities?
No.
With the underground.
No, not, oh, okay.
Not necessarily newer. I'm, I'm in a house from 1974, and I am waiting with eager anticipation for the underground fiber to roll out, but it's just the nature of the, doing the overhead first.
Aerial's cheaper, right? So you, you use, you start.
So you, you use, you start with aerial, and then you raise capital, and then you then migrate over to underground because it's more expensive.
Okay. One more last thing, darling.
Okay.
So with Xfinity, because my daughter lives in East Brunswick, and with Xfinity, you have, you have the one major, one major cable box in your house. And then you can get a smaller, just streaming box from Xfinity. And you don't have to pay for extra cable boxes for each TV you want a cable box on.